Councilmember LeBaron here, welcome to everybody who's in attendance.
Councilmember Snow. Councilmember Snow here. Airport campus school. Airbag.
Here. Okay. I'd like to add, uh, let's see. Councilmember Linoza to lead us in your place. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
We do not have any changes to the agenda. So moving on to a very special presentation tonight. Um, it is the Women's Grove Historical Society Essay Awards. And I will turn this over to Laura Hook, who is the Historical Society President, and Roberta Bulling, Historical Society Education Chair, to present the annual Women's Grove Essay Contest winners. You may approach the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Hook, I'm the President of the Women's Grove Historical Society. And, uh, for thirty-five years, we have had the Terganza Essay of Competition for third graders and also eighth graders. And tonight, we get to celebrate our wonderful third graders. And I was lucky enough to be a judge, and I got to read everybody's essay, and it was so neat. They tell the history of Lemon Grove, what it was then and what it is now. And they compare and contrast. And it's just so, so interesting to hear what they have learned. And, um, we also, uh, give them a, um, a video in their classroom. We usually would have them come visit us, but we're still not at that point yet. So we're, uh, we are sending the video to class, so they, they learn about all the archives that are in our museum. And I'd like to invite everyone to come visit the museum whenever you can. It's open on Saturdays from eleven to two. We'll actually be there this Saturday for Arbor Day. And it's going to be a great event from nine o'clock to whenever it gets over. So, um, I'm going to pass this over to, uh, Roberta, who is our Education Chair. She has done all the work on this. Um, she's a retired teacher herself, and she does a fantastic job, and she knows what she's doing, so I'm going to let her talk about it.
Thank you. I just want to thank a few people from the district that helped me. It's Debbie Skipper, also Marianna Vincent, our wonderful Superintendent Alletia. She's so supportive of this effort. And, um, the children know they're getting an award, but tonight they're going to find out which award. And we'll be starting with the honorable mentions. So children, when you hear your name called, you're going to come up here. Your teacher, she's here, welcome. And we're going to stage, get everybody's name is called, so we can take a picture. So we'll start, uh, from Mount Burden Elementary School. Under the direction of her teacher Fiona Murray, an honorable mention award was earned by Aaliyah.
Hi, Marlon.
Teronte. And from Lemon Grove Academy Elementary, under the direction of her teacher, Ms. Michelle Grip, an honorable mention award was earned by Ilani Ramirez. Congratulations. And from Mount Burden Elementary School, under the direction of her teacher Fiona Murray, an honorable mention award was earned by Napayo Napanaio Sin.
She's not here.
She's not here? Now, what is that? From Lemon Grove Academy Elementary School, under the direction of her teacher, Michelle Grip, a third place award was earned by Sophia Bosse. Congratulations. From Mount Burden Elementary School, under the direction of her teacher Fiona Murray, a second place award was earned by Alexia Martinez. Congratulations. And from Vista La Vez Academy, under the direction of her teacher, Caspar Lee Fabio, the first place award was earned by Erica Todd. Congratulations. Now, we want the teachers to come up here too. The teachers, they're going to be very much. Do we have some things for the teachers here? Do we have all the teachers and the students? Maybe get in the picture. Can you? Yes, of course. And get your time.
What a celebration to honor our future leaders, uh, who are winners of the Essay Contest. Let's give them all around the applause. The winners, I just want to let you know that you inspire us. And we appreciate you taking the time out to think about history and to put your thoughts on paper. And the mere fact that you took time out to do just that is commendable. But also, I want to take this opportunity to thank the parents for encouraging their kids to think about history. And the teachers who encourage their students to think about history. Uh, Lemon Grove is a very special place. And we all hold this place near and dear to our hearts. And it is my hope that future generations will do the same. So thank you. I look forward to, um, next year. And start thinking about putting an essay together, um, for next year. And hopefully, we will see you again right here to celebrate and honor you. So again, thank you to all that are involved in this process of recognizing, um, history, but also to the Historical Society um, for championing this process. Having kids where I want to paper our history. Without you and your dedication to volunteerism, none of this would happen. So we appreciate you and all that you do. And we celebrate you for the, your time and dedication to the history component of Women's Grove. We invite the parents, uh, if you want to, you can stay around and, um, hear what's going on in Women's Grove. And, um, not just today, but for every single city council meeting that we have, we'd love to see you here as a part of supporting the vision for the city and helping us to create good policy as women impact our future leaders ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. With that said, I will move on to our general public comment portion of the meeting. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public comments request their concerns not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Please note that according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker, or the topic may be brought to a city council meeting or consideration at a future date. For the Women's Grove Municipal Code Chapter 2.14.150, all remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual on, any, any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium and begin speaking. I'm checking with our city clerk to see if we got any speakers left. First, we have Jessie Lardy. I apologize in the AS if I mispronounced names, followed by Marina Panthers.
I don't have any microphone. I, I feel, I don't know. I'm Jessie Lardy.
Uh, unfortunately, we would like for you to utilize the, um, mic so that we can capture your voice in the recording. Thank you. Give us one second while we set the timer.
Is it on?
Do you want to begin?
I'm, I'm here just to ask and wonder why, after, I don't know, something like forty-five years of stuff all over the rec center, all of a sudden, about four or five years ago, cut off, completely cut off. No excuses, no reasons. It, it cut off a whole community of people that show up here. Uh, families grew up here, my daughters grew up here, my kids grew up here. I'm coaching adults, and I coached as little leaders. And it's just a, a, a community of good going on every day during the week, Monday through Friday. Now, the only excuse I've heard was that the lights were out of compliance. I've heard that one or once, but yet the lights are on, but the rec center needs to use them. And the rest of us are left out without anything to do. I'm, I'm still coaching. I had to go to Surrano Valley, to Mera Mesa, uh, other, other locations to get people here from Lemon Grove to play. It's, it's not a fun trip in traffic, but we do it because we know it's worth. We enjoy the time with the family. And I know there's more than one person wanting this really back. I, I get a lot of response on Facebook, Instagram, and I get no response from anyone that I've talked to. And I've talked to familiar faces here that I've talked to. And it was usually during the, uh, can I have your vote? Sorry. So, is there any, any response for that? No reason? Is there any way we could get that?
I'm, I'll explain why they don't respond, is because in order to discuss a matter that is before the city council, it has to be on the agenda. So, comment, the public comment period is your opportunity to address the city council, and they will not respond. However, they can agendize items if they so choose with two or more city council members to put that item on the agenda. That's why you don't get a response during public comment.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and re-use the record one more time. Um, the parameters that govern our public comment portion of the meeting so that everyone is aware of, uh, how this, this portion of the meeting will operate according to the law. So, please note that, according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker, or the topic will be brought to the city council for consideration at a future date. Per Lemon Grove Municipal Code Chapter 2.14.150, all remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. And then the speaker will have a maximum of three minutes now. Uh, just so that you know, once everyone provides the comments, um, our city manager can share some information with you, but we are not allowed to comment. But I just wanted to make that clear. But also, uh, we do not govern on social media. So, um, you know, you cannot always reach out to a council member that you're, um, comfortable with or be inside of a meeting, or, uh, post your questions to that individual council member. So I hope that creates, creates a better understanding of what the public comment section of the meeting is for. Just know that we hear you and we listen to you. And once all of the comments have been shared, then our city manager will provide clarity regarding some of the things that were shared. And I hope that helps.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Alona Manson, followed by John Elwood.
Alright, ready? I am Alona Manson, and I have been a resident at Lemon Grove for seventeen months. I'm excited and proud to be a resident of Lemon Grove. And I was surprised and disappointed by the resignation last year. The last meeting, I found the naivety and the reaction comments of the council chair. A young man, young to me, came up to defend his application with a testimony statement. As of the way the council called out a council member's behavior, it appeared to be the applicant's behavior that was being called into question. He, being a black man raised in this country, felt he needed to defend himself. He used precious time defending against rather than informing the council. The people that, that people did not recognize that was wrong. That the council and the audience in that matter was being reactionary when race was brought up. Um, there were roams and physical reactions from the council and the audience, including people in the room. All that reminds us and reinforces that race is always present. It is naive to believe that it is not. My concerns about race being brought up are related to when and about what. It was brought up similarly in a previous meeting. And again, it did not move the council forward, but held it back. And it did not call people on what they should be intended to. It distracted from the people. In the example of the last meeting, did the applicant understand the unwritten rules about the process, such as bombarding the city with, uh, status updates, like asking for assistance constantly, not at the end when you can do no more on your own, appearing vulnerable, acknowledging your right of ignorance, et cetera. Um, I do not know if the result would have been different if the meeting went differently. And to be completely forthright, I'm not currently invested in another marijuana dispensary in Lemon Grove, regardless of the money that's run to the city. I am concerned about how this council and this city address this race. Thank you for listening to me openly and not responding, but considering my words along with every other citizen's.
Uh, thank you. Next, we have John Elwood, followed by Richard Gold.
John Elwood. I've been coming to, uh, council meetings, uh, for a very long time. Long as any of you have been here. And, um, I've also attended MTS and the Water District Meeting. And you people are not professional. Last meeting, I spoke up supposedly out of turn about Ms. Fenner Linoza. She was talking to Mr. Castle while you people were doing a vote. That's the only reason I brought it up. You do not talk to anybody up there while you're sitting right there. Unless this person calls on you. That's the only time you talk to each other. And you don't call or outing, telling somebody to shut up, which has happened many times when you have a different council person here. Fortunately, he's retired. So get your stuff together and pay attention. You're supposed to be the professionals. You're the ones that set down all our rules. So you don't talk to each other. That includes you, him, her, her, and her. Understood? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Richard Gold, followed by Kara Finster.
Hello, my name is Richard Gold. I've lived here for thirty-seven plus years. My daughter was born here. She's grown up to be a corporate executive in the banking industry. I just don't understand you people. I'm an honorably discharged veteran of the United States Army. I am a perpetual volunteer in this city. I do more than you have any idea I do in this city. And do I get any recognition? Not a word. I don't understand why you don't repair our streets. Skyline Drive is in horrible, horrible condition. That street has been slurred over so many times. It's two inches thick in the center. It has thousands and thousands of potholes in it. And your public works comes out and they're put one little shovel here and one little shovel there, when there are literally thousands of potholes in it. I listen to traffic on that center every day, and the tires going off, you can hear them wearing. They just hit pothole after pothole after pothole. I'm also a regular volunteer at the blood bank. I'm working on my thirty-seventh gallon now. They say I've saved five hundred and fifty-eight lives now. And you guys wanted to throw me in jail for a hundred and thirty-seven and a half years using outdated criminal charges, which gave me no chance to even respond to it. This is an illegal activity. I've talked to a civil rights lawyer about it. He has all the information on his computer. I will not forget. I am not forgetful. I am a very intelligent guy. I can't believe, I just can't believe how unintelligent you are. You just, you not only don't respond, you ignore the people in this city. I just don't understand it. I mean, useful as a weapon on a bow. Have a nice night.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Kara, or Kara Finster, followed by Karen Finster. It's Carl Finster.
Okay, well, I'm going to start on out on, with twenty-three sixty-four and twenty-three sixty-six Main Street. It's a junk house. It started being torn apart to redo it, whatever the guy was going to do. And then because of legal, financial, who knows what, um, it got abandoned. It's been abandoned for years. And now it's become, um, an eyesore, uh, a home for the homeless. And I am losing thousands of dollars because nobody wants to buy a house on Carl's Way, which is right next door to it. And this is making me extremely upset that you guys are not doing the job. We vote you on in to do a job for us. Why aren't you doing it? That's my question. I know you aren't going to answer because you don't even have probably a very good answer for that. There's other issues with that piece of property. Your code enforcement guy, I feel sorry for him. He shouldn't even have a job here because there's nothing he can do. You've got it, or somebody's got it. His hands are high. We've got a red flag. What does a red flag mean? Nothing. Something's got to be done about it. Do I have to bring in the legal, finance, uh, financial thing, um, my legal people to go after you guys to get something done around here? Let's not do that. I don't think it should be done. But if I have to, I will. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And next, we have Karen Finster, that will complete our public comment portion of the meeting.
Hi, my name is Karen Finster. I've been a resident of Lemon Grove almost forty years. I've been a homeowner for twenty-five of those years. Uh, spent, raised my kids here, they went to school here. What I have today is a letter I'd like to read to the council. And attached to that letter, you should all have a copy, are some signatures. You can see there aren't very many signatures. This is a two-block area that I'm talking about. The, every person that we had the opportunity to talk to signed this and begged us to get something done. Dear Lemon Grove Council Members, we want the streets of Lemon Grove to be safe for all people, whether they are walking, bicycling, taking transit, or driving. We, the undersigned residents and homeowners of Lemon Grove, are writing to request that the City Council of Lemon Grove require the Public Works Street Division make permanent repairs to the streets on the twenty-four hundred and twenty-five hundred block of Guanavista Avenue to make our streets livable, safe, and comfortable for everyone traveling them. Even before our recent storms, the streets in this area were poorly patched, cracked. Even before our recent storms, the streets in this area were poorly patched, cracking, and riddled with potholes. Since the storms, the street has become much worse. Given that much of this area does not have sidewalks, simply walking to a neighbor's house or to a nearby store can cause a fall due to the poor state of the street. A person, adult or child, riding a bicycle finds it difficult to avoid large cracks and potholes. Just a slight miscalculation can cause a serious injury or worse. Furthermore, cars can be seriously damaged as hitting one or more of these spots. When driving on the street is unavoidable. As residents of these blocks, we have no choice but to drive on these streets. The poor upkeep of these streets creates major safety, health, and quality of life issues for us. In order to provide safe and comfortable streets for all users, we urge you to immediately begin the process of having the streets here permanently repaired. These repairs should be permanent street repairs or replacement, not patches and slurry sealing. As we have seen the past few years, these do not last. And when they disintegrate, they become worse with time, each time. Providing the needed repairs in the long term is less costly. They're paying for all the mishaps, injuries, accidents, and car damage that will inevitably result from leaving the streets in their current state of disrepair. Please support the livable, safe streets in Lemon Grove for the community who serve as council members and take care of this problem before it becomes worse. I was surprised to find that most of the people I spoke with were elderly and there are no sidewalks on those two blocks. And so the elderly people can't even go outside and walk. I had one person tell me that they tried to take their baby out in a stroller and they couldn't even do that. The streets are horrible. I urge you, if you haven't been on those streets, to drive up and down, just once in your own course.
Thank you so very much. And now I will turn this over to the city manager to provide comments regarding some of the things that were shared tonight during public comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to address the softball issue. So the city of Lemon Grove is continuing a relationship with the group that produced the softball or was the main driver for softball. Because there were ten thousand dollars in the rear and they owed the city that money for several years. That doesn't mean any softball organization can't go to the Lemon Grove Unified School District and rent those fields and start a softball league. So if anybody's interested, just work with the school district. They rent them out after hours to start any softball league anybody wants. And then on May third, the City Council will have its strategic priority session here in this room at 5:30. So please come. We're also going to have a capital improvement workshop that's still yet to be scheduled, but we're trying to schedule that at the beginning of May, in the first couple of weeks of May. And that will address some of the infrastructure issues we heard today regarding the streets.
Thank you. And so we will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Um, approval?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will ask the attorney clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron? No.
Councilmember Snows?
Aye.
Mayor Bassius?
Aye.
Second question, jury. Three to one with one.
Thank you so very much. The next is, I don't remember two, which is a public hearing and introduction of ordinance number thirty-three, amending ordinance number thirty-two, describing methods for calculating Lemon Grove sanitation district sewer service charges. And I'll ask the attorney clerk. Have the notices been given as required by law? And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents available and provided?
Well, notices have been provided and the reports and exhibits have been placed online.
Thank you so very much. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney to ask council if they have any dislodging conflicts of interest relating to this item.
Thank you. I would just ask each member, because this is a public hearing, I would ask each member of the city council to indicate whether they have any conflicts of interest or whether they have had any ex parte communications regarding this matter.
And so we'll start with Councilmember Snow.
No conflicts?
No ex parte communication.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
I have none.
And I do not have any conflicts or any ex parte communication.
I would now also ask Councilmember LeBaron to indicate whether she's had any ex parte communications or whether there are any conflicts of interest on this item.
Thank you. City Attorney, please a second. I have neither. Thank you.
Thank you. I will turn this over to Izley Moria, who is our Public Works Director, to present the staff report.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Board. Tonight's public hearing is to introduce ordinance number thirty-three, which amends ordinance number thirty-two. And as it was noted, describes the methods for calculating Lemon Grove sanitation district sewer service charges. Sewer rates are evaluated periodically to maintain adequate revenues to cover operating and capital costs. The board's practice is to approve a rate study that examines a five-year period, which recommends a financial plan with adjustments to rates. The next five-year period, which is currently under review, is fiscal year 2023, '24 through fiscal year 2027, '28. Current sewer rates are effective through June 30th, 2023. In December 2021, the board awarded an agreement with Harrison Associates to perform a new five-year sewer rate study. Their scope of work included evaluating existing sewer rates and rate equitability along user classifications, identifying alternative methods to adjust the commercial rate structure based on flow from potable water records, recommending updated sewer service rates for the upcoming five-year period, and recommending appropriate reserve levels for operational and capital fees. And lastly, preparing a Proposition 218 notice sheet. At the January seventeenth board meeting this year, the staff came before the board seeking direction whether to adopt a new commercial rate structure based on flow, or also known consumption, versus remaining with the existing flat rate structure based on equivalent dwelling units. At that meeting, the board directed staff to proceed with implementing a low-based system for commercial rates and remaining with the flat rate structure for residential rates, and authorized staff to proceed with Proposition 218 notice sheet requirements. Before we get into the presentation this evening on the final study, I'd like to provide an overview of the amendments in the ordinance that's before you, which is summarized in the agenda report packet. And also, there's a clean version of the edits in the ordinance, which is also attached to your separate one. Section thirty, which is the establishment of sewer service charges, establishes four customer classes based on wastewater strength and impact to the sewer system. The rates that were developed, that are being developed, are your residential rates and then your commercial classifications, which we'll go into this evening. But essentially, your low, commercial medium, and commercial high. This section also reduces the average wastewater discharge flow per equivalent dwelling unit from two hundred and forty gallons per day to one hundred and sixty-six gallons per day. Section thirty point one, which is the determination of annual sewer service charges. This section establishes the proposed sewer service charges for residential properties for the five-year study period. It recommends a proposed sewer service charge for vacant residential parcels where sewer service is connected and readily available. Again, the residential customer rate structure will remain at the flat rate per dwelling unit method. Section thirty point two, which assigns sewer discharge for commercial customers. This section assigns sewer, the sewer discharges for commercial industrial properties based on the volume of wastewater discharge into the sewer system measured by their constituent sewage level and their associated strength class. And again, we'll delve into that in the presentation this evening. Section thirty point three establishes the proposed sewer service rates for commercial classifications for the five-year study period. And like residential, it also proposes a vacant commercial parcel charge for, or vacant parcels are readily connected, readily connected to the system. So those are the amendments. The ordinance also has three new sections, and that's section three point four, which is an appeal process. And that section includes language for formalizing the process for both commercial and residential property owners to submit an appeal of their annual sewer service charge. Section thirty point five, which adds language on refunds and reductions of sewer service charges. And section thirty point six, which addresses back charges for unpaid sewer service charges, establishes the authority or the framework for approvals of refunds for the sewer service charges for properties which may have been overcharged or were not charged at all and require back charges for those properties. Again, so the current study that's before you is a five-year study that looks at fiscal years 23, '24 through 27, '28. At this time, I'd like to introduce Karen Johnson with Harrison Associates, who will delve a little further into the highlights of the study period that seeks to establish the sewer service rate charges for this five-year period.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'll start with the presentation off by giving an overview of, you know, what are the things that we look at when we're doing a rate study? There are three primary pieces to a rate study requirement analysis where you're looking at, you know, how are you going to develop your rates over this five-year period? So first, we look at a revenue requirement. That's step one. And that's essentially a five-year financial plan, where you're looking at what are the projected revenues of utilities? What are the projected expenditures of a utility? And then looking at what the current rate revenues are and determining if those are sufficient to pay for the projected costs. If they're not sufficient for the projected costs, then we look at, you know, what is the annual rate adjustment strategy that would be needed in order for revenues to recover the full cost of sewer operating expenditures? That's step one, called the revenue requirement. The second piece we look at is called cost of service. And that's where you take the revenue requirement. So that's the total annual revenue that needs to be collected from customers in order to cover the costs. And you allocate that total cost to the individual classes that were mentioned before. So there's residential and commercial type properties. And so it's, you know, looking at how those customers place demand on the system and then allocating a share of cost to each of those classes so you can ensure that you have your equitable rates. The last component of the study is called rate structure design. That's where you're looking at both the level of the rates, how much more money do you need? And the structure of the rates is, you know, how is that rate going to be structured in terms of a fixed charge, is it a flat charge, is it a volume charge? That's considered rate structure design of how you are going to collect that revenue from the different customers on the system in order to recover fairly from all of your customer classes and ensure that there's sufficient revenue to pay for the expenditures. That is kind of a quick overview of the rate study process. And I'll just walk through some of the elements of each one of these stages. So on this first slide here, the first thing we look at is referred to as fiscal policies. That is essentially benchmark that the district establishes for its financial performance. Mainly, we're talking about cash reserves. So the sewer utility is operated like a business enterprise, meaning that it must recover its full cost through charges from its customers. And a key piece of that is making sure that there are adequate cash reserves to help weather any financial disruptions, kind of known and unknown expenditures of the utility. So financial policies are an integral part of setting the level of what the rates need to be. So first, we looked at operating reserves. There's two components to the district's operating reserves. And this is the minimum level of cash that would be recommended to be held in reserves for unforeseen needs. The first one is a working capital balance equal to about forty percent of the annual operating expenses. This reserve is to manage the monthly variation of your expenditures compared to your revenue collections. Why this one is particularly important for Lemon Grove is the district incurs their sewer expenditures monthly throughout the entire year and the revenue collections are only collected twice a year on de-tax rolls. And so it's very important to be able to manage that month-to-month variability in expense versus collections. The next piece of the operating reserve is referred to as the rate stabilization reserve. That reserve is set equal to San Diego Metro's treatment expense to help hedge against any future unexpected increases for the treatment charges. Again, why that is important is because the district really has a kind of limited control over what those costs can be. The proposed sewer rates that are looked at and will be presented later on does incorporate what that level of expenditure is projected to be given on, you know, based on the information we knew at the time of this study. The intent of this kind of reserve is to hedge against, if those projections come in higher, the district does not pass those additional costs on to their customers. Some utilities do, the district does not. And so these reserves are there to make sure that operations can be continued against those things. So those are the operating reserves. Similarly, you look at capital reserves. You know, capital infrastructure is very expensive for a sewer utility. There's always the ongoing repair and replacement of your infrastructure assets as well as improving the system to maintain sustainable operations. And so, you know, the key to having stable levels of cash reserves for capital is to manage the prioritized capital program and also to meet emergency capital outlets that may occur. And you can have an emergency that can have a one-time large expense in the utility. And so having stable, appropriate level of reserves is very important to enterprise fund like the sewer utility. The last reserve is the pure water program reserve for the San Diego Pure Water Program. This reserve was established during the last five-year rate study to track building reserves for this new program to pay for the operating and capital-related expenses. So the intent now of this reserve is to use that reserve to draw down on each year to pay the annual projected pure water program cost and not further impact rates. So there is currently a reserve built up for these pure water program costs that will be accessed each year to pay for the expenditures rather than having sewer rates pay for that piece of the district's expenditures. So this is kind of the starting point of the revenue requirement. The next slide will go through what we look at in the revenue requirement. That is basically looking at the buildup of the expenditures and the types of expenditures that the utility has, starting with the operating and maintenance expense. The chart it shows here is we have metro expenses in that very bottom line, bottom, bottom buildup of the blocks. That's the pure water program. That little doggone that goes across it, that's the reserve that's going to be funding that. But that indicates that that is not an impact on sewer rates for this study. So what we'd be looking for is recovering the regular metro expenditures for your ongoing treatment. Those have been forecasted based on the forecast that was provided for fiscal year 2023. And then based on the best known projections at the time, the assumption was that those costs would increase about ten percent for next fiscal year, twenty-two. costs would increase about ten percent for next fiscal year, 2024, and about five percent per year thereafter. The district's O and M expenditures, we looked at the adopted fiscal year 2023 budget, we looked at the historical review of what kind of cost escalation they've been from year to year, and then just kind of looking at industry indices that are looked at for how you forecast operating expenditures, and those costs have been projected to increase about three and a half percent. So that is the total revenue requirement for operations and maintenance expense. And it basically goes from, you know, currently about five million, and then based on cost escalation and projections of new requirements, it goes up to about a little over six million dollars by the end of the five years. So that's piece one of the revenue requirement analysis. The next slide is we're looking at what the capital expenditures are every year. So the district puts together a five-year capital improvement program where they list the repairs, some replacements, equipments, and types of infrastructure that's needed to be, to be constructed over the next five years. It was a total CIP, which is capital improvement program, of about eighteen point four million dollars for the total time period. And that kind of dotted line that goes across the middle there, that's just representing that, you know, an eighteen point four million dollar project is about an average annual capital spending need of about three point one million dollars. And so we're looking to make sure that the rates are sufficient to be able to provide the funding to execute those projects. The assumption is that the capital improvement program would be funded through sewer rates, through these capital cash reserves that are being built up, and through any sewer capacity charges that would be assessed on new customer growth. The intent is to mitigate debt service and have all the projects cash funded with no new debt planned over the study period. The district currently does not have any debt, and so that is not a cost increment that's required to be recovered from the rates. The plan is to continue that practice of cash funding the capital improvement program. Pulling together the two pieces of the revenue requirement, which is looking at what are the operating costs, what are the capital costs, and then how does that look in terms of your revenues? So the bar charts over to the right, that's the buildup of your operating maintenance expenditures and your capital cash reserves. I'm trying to read the numbers on that slide, but I'm guessing the bottom one starts with that is the pure water reserve, and then it moves up to paying for the metro and district expenditures, then that little line there, that's contributions to your operating reserves. So in order to meet that forty percent of O and M reserves, you know, how much of the increment needs to go in there? So that's that, the top bar, which is that kind of grayish color bar, that is the cash funding that's needed for the capital program. And so you can see the dotted line across the years, that is what the current sewer revenues generate projected over the study period, under the current level of rates. The top line is what, is where the rates need to be. So it's that little gap in between four years, you know, 2025 through 2028, of how much additional revenue is needed to cover all of those costs. So as we see in fiscal year 2024, which is that first bar, there is no proposed rate revenue increase for 2024. You can see that that revenue line covers those total expenditures, so there is not an overall revenue increase needed for that year. Important to point out here, the commercial rates will vary though, based on this change in the structure from proposed volume-based rates. There'll be some changes within the commercial class, but there won't be an overall projected rate increase for the utility. And then moving forward for 2025 through the remaining period, all customers would be assessed a three percent rate increase per year over that time period. And what that provides for is the ability to keep pace with the annual cost escalation, cash funding the capital program, and of course maintaining stable cash reserves to be able to manage risk appropriately. So that is sort of the summary of the first component, which is the revenue requirement analysis. This slide here is just an extra slide that shows the buildup of the capital and operating cash reserves. So these are the three components of the cash reserves. And that bottom bar is the operating fund cash, middle bar is the capital cash, and then the pure water program. So showing that the district currently has about twenty-three million dollars in cash reserves, and is staying pretty steady over, over the course of the planning period, maintaining those stable reserves. The dip down towards the end is actually the drawdown of the pure water reserve, which is, that's its intended purpose, is to be going down on. So the district has very healthy reserves. The proposed rates that we're putting in place, or proposing to put in place, will help maintain that sound financial position. So, you know, positive fiscal policy management over the last couple of years. Next, before looking into what this new proposed rate structures would look at, just as a point of reference here, this slide here shows what the current rate structure is. So the current rate structure is a rate for equivalent dwelling unit, which we're choosing EU, based on the type of property. Currently, that rate is six hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents per year per EDU. So that's six fifty-five, twenty for a residential customer is based on the number of dwelling units. So that would be one unit for a single-family resident, and if it's a multifamily, like a fourplex or something, it would be the six fifty-five, twenty multiplied by four. That's the residential component. Commercial EDUs are based on a variety of measures based on the type of business. So some are assigned EDUs based on square footage, hotel motel living units, number of pupils for a school, number of seats in a restaurant, and so on. So rather than looking at water usage, which is what, you know, the proposal is going to be looking at, is looking at these types of various measurements in order to assign that EDU. So for commercial, then currently, the assigned EDU based on these measures above is multiplied by that six fifty-five, twenty to determine an individual property owner's annual commercial sewer bill. So what we're focusing on here for this study is the change in the rate structure to commercial. That's been referred to, that's slide here, as the hybrid rate structure. So an overview of the structure, as mentioned before, for the residential customer classes, the current rate structure will be maintained. So it will continue to be a rate structure per equivalent dwelling unit based on number of dwelling units for single-family, you know, condominiums, multifamily, duplexes, and so forth. Important to note here that, you know, the, the industry trend has been towards volume-based rates for all customers as being the most, kind of best structure for, for a sewer utility. However, residential flat rates still remain a very common industry practice, much less so than commercial. So commercial is really moving more towards a volume-based rate. Utilities still maintain the flat rates for residential, primarily due to the fact that class as a whole, they have very similar volume and strength characteristics on a per-unit basis. They all use domestic-level strength, so there's not a lot, so there's not variance in the, in the strength that goes into the sewer system. It's a fairly easy structure to understand and fairly easy to implement. So it still does remain a valid rate structure. Also, when we looked at the cost-to-service analysis for this study, of looking at the customer classes as a whole, their cost recovery currently is in line with what our results showed for the cost of service. And so, you know, again, the focus has been on the commercial, moving from the rate for EDU to the volume-based structure, as really relying on actual water usage and wastewater district characteristics, as opposed to those other measurements like square footage and so forth. This is important because for a commercial customer, there really is a wide disparity in what the volume and strength characteristics are of any individual customer based on the type of business. That's different, that's for residents who tend to use these more similarly. So moving to a volume-based rate structure for the commercial customers would potentially enhance, you know, the equitable cost of recovery from individual customer users based on their particular demand characteristics. As noted in the introduction, there is the proposal of a vacant property rate, and that is for parcels that are connected to the sewer system that are not generating flow into the system. But there are fixed costs that a utility incurs to serve all customers that are connected, regardless of the volume of discharge. So this is a new charge that would apply to vacant properties. So that's sort of the overview there. Before looking into, you know, how we develop that rate, we first define the customer classes. So this would be the group of customers that are going to have inherent rates applied to them. They're essentially categorized this way according to strength differentials. That's the key differentiating factor in a sewer utility, is the strength of wastewater discharge. So the residential customer classes, we mentioned, there's no change in that structure. Residential customer classes are assumed at domestic-level strength, and if, based on industry standards, domestic-level strength is defined as two hundred milligrams per liter of biochemical oxygen demand in suspended solids. That's the constituent level of, of the strength of sewer that goes into the system. So these current customer classes, that's single-family, condominiums, mobile home, and the different types of multifamily. So no change to this customer class. And then the commercial customers have been divided into low, medium, and high, and that means low-strength, medium, high, sorry, again, based on industry standards. So the industry standards, looking at certain types of customers that we are considering commercial low, these are the types of commercial properties that generally discharge wastewater very similarly to, similarly to a residential customer. So they are also considered domestic-level strength of about two hundred milligrams per liter. These are properties of your basic commercial, kind of common ones are, you know, your office buildings and storage, and, you know, medical ventilators, schools and colleges. These are all considered, you know, these are just samples of the types of customers that would be within this, what we're considering. They do not incur additional strength above that, whatever resident does. Then moving into the commercial medium, these are more things that, you know, well, they're not high-strength, that's, that's more and more like restaurants and stuff. The commercial medium is sort of that in-between property, where it's like bars and hotels without dining facilities, and then all, you know, shopping centers, repair service stations, mixed use, so kind of, you know, not quite domestic-level strength, but not really high-strength. The industry standard there is, is these customers would be between the two hundred milligrams per liter and four hundred milligrams per liter. Then the high commercial, that's really probably most concentrated on restaurants, you know, the, you know, the high-level cost of restaurants and things like, so bars with dining facilities, hotels, motels with dining facilities, restaurants, also supermarkets and cafes and mortuaries are the types of commercial questions that really have a high load on the wastewater discharge into the sewer system. So this is how we start with, these are the customer classes that we have, and we're looking at how are we going to allocate that revenue requirement that we just determined to these customer classes, and then how do we design a rate for them? So the cost-to-service analysis, that's where you look at the total revenue requirement, and, you know, for those who can see these little numbers, the revenue requirement essentially says the district needs in 2024, seven point one million dollars. That's the revenue requirement. I have that shown between, this is the district share of those expenditures, the metro share, but basically this line down there at the bottom, there is, is seven point one million dollars. Before allocating those to the customer classes, we allocate them to what's referred to as functions of service of the sewer system. So the sewer system, it provides customer-related services, it provides services to manage the volume of flow, services for managing the removal of strength. So those are considered the functional components of a sewer system. We go through and we allocate those to those components kind of based on, you know, industry standard practices and information that's provided from Metro on the cost shares for the treatment component. Bottom line, on this sort of outlined red dotted line, is about seven point one million dollars. About eight percent of that is customer-related costs, seventy percent or so flow-related costs, with the other ten percent each for BOD and suspended solids. And then we want to look at that line and say, okay, now, what is the demand that's placed on each one of these functions by the different customer classes that we just identified? And so that's the next step, and I'm just really, you know, how you get there is, is you go through and look at, you know, what are the, what are the characteristics of these different customer classes? So we look at the number of accounts for each customer class. We look at estimating the sewer flow for each customer class. And since sewer flow is not metered, water, metered water usage is considered the best measure of sewer flow. So flow is determined on water usage records provided from Keelis Water District. The residential flow is based on winter period average, and commercial flow is based on total actual water usage. The rationale between using winter period for your residential customers is your residential customers tend to use a lot of water in the summer for your outdoor purposes like irrigation or car washing, those, that water does not enter the sewer system. So using the winter period average is kind of a surrogate for looking at what is indoor water usage, and those go down into the system. So that rationale is fully true for the commercial classes, so it's more, for common practice to use total water usage for the commercial class. While there may be some exceptions for certain types of commercial properties where water, some of the water is used in their product or process, and as would be identified in the ordinance, there is an appeal process for any unique circumstances where a customer can demonstrate that their process takes a lot of the water, so taking a look at a, you know, potentially a reduced amount of water complication of that charge. So that's essentially how you're determining flow, and then the wastewater characteristics for BOD and suspended solids, those just kind of take that factor of the, the strength characteristics that we noted before. So for residential and commercial low, the wastewater strength of their flow is the same as the annual flow. It's domestic-level strength, so there isn't an adder. When you get to the medium and high, you're basically taking the ratios of, you know, that higher strength and weighting that flow to give you an appropriate cost for the cost of strength. You know, a lot of information, but it's just, you know, just sort of a recap of, you know, there is a very detailed process that we go through to, to arrive at this information to ensure that we have equitable rates. Some real level of information, kind of skipping some in between steps down to the, you know, down to the answer, what we do is we look at, for each one of those customer functions, right, customer flow, strength for BOD. This top piece of this, this graph here shows, based on this detailed analysis that's conducted, is, you know, what is each class's share of each one of those components? And then it just simply multiplies all that through based on that bottom line that's highlighted in, in red, which is the allocation that we looked at previously for the total seven point one million dollars. So percentage share of each component is multiplied by the piece that was allocated to that component, and then it simply determines what the share for each customer class is. to that component, and then it simply determines what the share for each customer class is of that $7.1 million, and that is the revenue that is targeted for each class in the design of the rate structures in order to come up with the proposed rates. And now moving on to the actual design of the rate structure for the hybrid rate structure, again, residential, maintaining the rate for EDU, no changes there, adding the vacant property. So commercial, the new rate structure, as opposed to being a flat rate per EDU, there would be a base charge, a annual base charge, and that would be set equal to the essentially flat rate per EDU for the residential customers, which includes the first 675 cubic feet of water usage per month. Essentially what that is, is that the base charge is basically equivalent to one EDU of a residential customer. When we were talking about that winter period average for residential customers, there averages 675 cubic feet of water per month for a dwelling unit, so that's considered a one EDU. Then for the individual customer classes for medium, low, medium, and high, they would have a volume charge, which is the dollars per 100 cubic feet applied to their water usage over that amount that's of 675 that's included in the base charge. Again, those rates will vary by the category of commercial customer, and then again, a vacant property charge for commercial as well. So jumping into the actual proposed rates themselves, this is the schedule of proposed rates for residential customers over the five-year period. So as we've mentioned, you have no change to the current rate structure for EDU for residential customers, and as we indicated, no overall utility rating has reached for 2024, so the residential rate for this upcoming fiscal year 2024 will remain as it is today at $655.20, and then that 3% per year increase for 2024, 2025 would be added over the next four years, and then it's showing the new vacant charge would also increase at that 3% per year. So for a typical residential customer, a single-family customer with one unit, going from the $655, the 3% per year to the $737, that represents about a five-year average increase to the bill of about $16.45 per unit per year, so that's about less than $1.40 per month of an increase there for a single-family customer. Then looking at commercial, those rates, where we're actually changing the structure, the base charge component of the structure would be the same charge as presented for the residential customer. So it would be going from the current $655.20 to the $737, and that would include the first 675 cubic feet of water usage per month, and then the volume charge, shown on the bottom half of the chart, is for usage, you know, over that amount, and you can see that the rate increases, the unit rate increases as the strength of the last increases. So $7.04 for a low, $8.95 for a medium, and $13.18 per unit of water for the high. And then like residential, those rates would increase 3% per year over the remaining four years. So, well, there was no rate increase for residents in 2024, there's no change in rate structure and no overall increase. The actual impact on individual commercial bills will vary, there'll be some that go up, there'll be some that go down, and that's all based on comparing, you know, depending on each individual property, what is their current assignment of EDUs, how does that compare to what their actual water usage is, and then what strength classification do they fall into? So there'll be, you know, increases and decreases for the commercial in that first year as the rate structure implemented in 2024, and then all customers would have the same uniform 3% rate increase over the remaining four years of the study period. And then lastly, this is just an informational slide on looking at a survey of some sample sewer bills for residential customers kind of in the surrounding areas of Lemon Grove. See, Lemon Grove there is kind of those, the fourth line, purple from the left. So, you know, there's not a great deal of variance in a large number, large number of these, but this information on based on current rates of where Lemon Grove falls with some of the neighboring jurisdictions. So with that, I want to turn that back over to easy for next steps.
Thank you, Karen. So, kind of where to go from, where do we open here? If the board adopts the ordinance that's before you this evening, our next steps will include kind of before you on May 2nd for the second reading of the ordinance and the adoption of the ordinance. May, June, staff will continue performing outreach to those commercial customers that will see varying degrees of changes in their bills based off of the new structure, so we'll continue the outreach and education to those commercial customers. In June, at some point in June will be before you, before the board regarding the submittal of the tax roll and the approval of the engineer's report. So essentially this authorizes the submittal of those charges to San Diego County to assess those rates. July 1st, the new rates will be effective, and again, item number five is the August had submittal deadline to the county assessor regarding the new rates, so when staff comes before you again in June timeframe with the tax roll, those properties will be submitted to the tax roll by, before August. A little bit about the Proposition 218 process, so I'm complying with Prop 218 and after the board meeting on January 17th, which authorized us to proceed with that, staff mailed public notices on March 3rd to 7,202 public notices to owners of each parcel here in Lemon Grove. In order for, in order for the board to deny the approval of the rate adjustments, 3,602 valid written protests must be received. As of April 12th, the city received three valid protests, and I will check it with the city clerk to see if any protests, any additional protests have been received.
We received one additional protest for a total of four.
Thank you. At this time, this concludes staff's presentation, and we recommend that the board conduct a public hearing, make a finding regarding the number of written protest received, and introduce and conduct a press review by title only of ordinance number 34. Staff's here to answer any questions.
Thank you so very much. As we did, excuse me, open the public hearing, and we did put on the record that we have received a total number of four protests. What I will do is I'll check in with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips related to this item. We do have one that's coming up related to this item too. And so I will call on John Woodward for the first volume.
John Woodward, first I'd like to know why we have to pay for pure water? Because we're not going to drink it. It's, you know, just from the city of San Diego. And SFRs, how do you know how many people live in the house? How do you know what the flow is other than what the water bill is? They could have 10 kids and three parents, you know, 13 people living there, or just one people living there. So how does that make any sense to discharge every SFR the same amount? Doesn't make any sense to me, and somebody could convert their house into a, you know, rent a room to somebody, and you don't know if somebody moved in there. It doesn't make any difference if they use the same amount of water. Can somebody explain that to me?
Thank you, and so I will defer to staff to respond to those two questions.
So, to answer two questions, you know, there's pros and cons to a flat rate system or a flow rate system. But regards to how to calculate average flow for residential, for residential on a fixed rate, you know, it's not going to be exact, because as we mentioned, wastewater isn't metered. However, when we adopt the, when we look at the rate, the 655 EDU rate, there is examination on the overall flow of the district, and there's computation on taking the overall hundreds and thousands of gallons throughout the city and attributing, coming up with an average per EDU to come up with that 655. So it's not exact per se, but it takes into consideration the overall flow that goes through, through the city, which is metered by City of San Diego at certain locations throughout the city.
And Madam Mayor, I want to also add that part of this new update for the ordinance is we're adding a provision that allows households that may be one to have a rate adjustment of true, so to speak, like we did for commercial or multi-tenants previously. So we've added that new residential for folks that say have one person in the house and they don't want to be able to be there.
Thank you, and I believe Mr. Woodward asked the question, why do we have to pay for pure water as well?
Madam Chair, can you repeat that question?
I believe that Mr. Woodward asked the question, why do we have to pay for pure water when we don't use pure water?
I want to attempt to answer that question. Some of that has to do with the infrastructure, because right now we are one of the few wastewater districts that still flows into the ocean. And, but pure water, it's going to capture all of that water that goes currently into the ocean to reuse, so we have to pay a portion of the equipment upgrade so City of San Diego can reuse that water. That's essentially why Metro, Metro JPA is covering a portion of the cost, not the total cost, but a portion of the cost of the pure water upgrades. It's really because of our flows.
Madam Secretary, and thank you for that, just a small one. So all our wastewater gets treated at the Point Homme wastewater treatment facility, and the pure water program is designed so that the water that is, that goes in the outfall on the Pacific Ocean, that most of that water gets diverted and recycled in through the pure water program. So because Lemon Grove's wastewater will no longer be, you're right, it will no longer be discharged in the Pacific Ocean, it's going to be recycled, you know, we have to pay our share of those capital costs.
Thank you so very much. And next we have Teresa Rosette Proffitt, followed by Ramise Lopez.
Madam Mayor and City Council officials, what I don't understand is under the high section of this, which includes restaurants, things like that, our restaurants in Lemon Grove are already suffering as it is. Their prices have increased because their food has increased, everything has increased. Then they have the problem of the containers, the Chaco containers. They're going to have an increase with that. They also have to deal with the homeless around their properties that vandalize their businesses. They have to clean up, you know, from the homeless. We are going to put more and more businesses in Lemon Grove out of business if we don't protest this. We cannot afford to lose another business in Lemon Grove. We should be welcoming businesses with open arms, but we are not business-friendly, and I send that year after year after year. What I'd like to know is, Edco, Home Depot, where do they fall on this list of categories? And in the high category, how much percentage of businesses in Lemon Grove does this affect? So again, I ask you to make a very tough decision to possibly not vote for this, because again, we cannot afford any businesses to be put out of business. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will turn this over to staff to respond to the question.
So I can quickly answer the question on what percentage of business is associated with this effect? So of the commercial customers, 83% of the customers are estimated to be in that commercial low class, 11% in the medium class, and 6% in the high class. So less than, less than 6% of the customers, commercial customers would be in that, in that high class.
Thank you.
And then regarding the question about Edco, Home Depot, I don't have the exact details, but I have a general summary of where they fall. So as we mentioned, businesses will see, will vary, because Home Depot is a big building, a lot of square footage, they're charged multiple EDUs, so 655, 20 times, I forget what the number of EDUs is, but by switching to a volume base, they'll be, I believe their rates overall will decrease because they're not going to be, or their rates will be, will decrease because of the water consumption, you know, they're, they may have one or two restrooms, they may use water irrigation for the, for the gardening area, but pretty much that's the amount of water that they're utilizing. Edco will be, will see an increase in their overall rates, they do utilize a lot of water, water consumption. We have reached out to Edco because they use water in their operations, so they tamper down the dust with all the, the MRF on federal, so even though that they're utilizing a lot of water, that water's not going into the sewage system, it's more mist and utilizing and utilizing to tamper down the dust within that vicinity. So Edco's actually a perfect example of, you know, an example of where staff would work with that particular business that, you know, has seen a drastic increase, and, you know, we would examine their operations, is the water being discharged into the sewer system? If so, then, you know, the rates would apply, but if not, we would work with them to adjust their bill accordingly.
Thank you so very much. And finally, we have- And finally, we have Ramise Lopez, and that will complete our speaker slots.
It's actually Beatrice Lopez. I'm here with a player grill. So I'm in the high bracket, which is kind of hard because, you know, even though we are very busy, I just had to cut twenty percent of my staff to keep up with the packaging, like Teresa said, with the high class of food. She said, we had a bill of $6,800 in January from S E G E, which normally is forty-eight, thirty-eight. So what kind of bill am I going to give this? I don't know. Is this going to help businesses around me? I don't know. I know there's a couple restaurants around me that trend open. They haven't. And I'm just saying, you know, we need the city. If you guys need us, we need you to help businesses to prosper, you know? We've been in Lemon Grove since nineteen eighty-seven. While in mine, we're not making money. We're busy, but everything that comes in goes out. Like I said, we're having today's S E G meeting to protest because our bills are incredible and incredibly high. I don't know what to expect out of this. Us being in the high, you know, I know that I have twenty employees, like, you know, Home Depot has over a hundred. You know, they got to go to the back and they got to, you know, so where do we stand? Are somebody getting, you know, better acknowledgement than us? I don't know, you know? Thank you.
I just wanted clarification on your question, just to make sure that staff is addressing your question. So if you could just restate your questions?
Well, my question is, you know, what kind of surprise am I going to look in my bill? And what July you said, you know, we got a big surprise from S E G E. And then why are we looking at?
Yeah, and we could follow up with you with regards to the details. You know, we ran analysis of our businesses, the commercial businesses will be affected in Lemon Grove. This is part of the education and outreach process that we mentioned that will occur in June. So we'll get your information and provide that information to you. We'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And so I will now look to our council members to see if they have questions. We will have two questions, that's the maximum. And I'll start with council member who doesn't.
So if you could go to page four of your actual, of the study that you did. Page twenty-three of the whole staff report. I don't think that, you talked about this, so the, with regard to the difference with the City of San Diego debt financing, the capital costs. Could you just do a little brief explanation of how that is going to affect the city's contribution or contribution payment?
So I need some, I don't know what page you're referring to. So I don't know what document you're referring to.
It's two.
Okay. It's, it's, is it page four with exhibit two dash one, which is the operating reserve?
It's attachment B, the five-year sanitation district rate study. Page four of that, of the rate study. In section two point one, point two.
Okay, so the actual report, okay, so pure water reserve. Okay, so I'm reiterating your question is, is how is that financing going to impact this as it comes on board?
Yes.
The answer is right now is we do not have that information available at the time. How, how it started out from sort of a historical perspective is that the pure water program was going to be cash funded by some people's share. And then they changed the methodology where no upfront payments were going to be made. And, you know, hence why the reserve is built up and will be used annually. At the time that we did this study, they were in the process of doing their forecast of what this might look like over the next five years. That's where we received information, that best available information at the time would be that these costs would increase, maybe ten percent this year, twenty twenty-four, maybe five percent or more going on. Right now, the total cost for twenty twenty-three, the forecast in total for pure water is $275,000. No debt has been issued or incurred at the end of this point. So, you know, there is this looming number out there about, you know, at the time of this analysis, there was, there was no projection of that. What I can share is that there is currently about $6 million in the pure water reserve to be drawn on. In this current five-year projection, we're drawing on roughly $265,000 per year to about $340,000 per year. So there is a time before there would be an impact on rates, given what this forecast would be. But this is one of that great unknowns, right?
And that's what, you know, that's been our difficulty all along is that, you know, we know, we can kind of estimate based on what we've paid in the past, what we're going to charge to treat our water. But we don't, it's unknown. Every, you know, we've been standing up for this for years and years. We don't know what they're going to start charging us for, for capital costs for pure water. Correct? Okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to make sure that's clear is when we vote on these, on the rates, whether it's the residential rates, which are the flat rates, or the commercial, or the commercial rates, which are going to be based on flow. And my hope there is that that's not going to cost our businesses more money. That's not our intention here, is to make more money off of our businesses on this. Is that, you know, that, I'm assuming that's correct. We just, we just want to cover our costs. It's not, we're not trying to make money off of anybody on this. But every year, we're going to look at the sanitation district budget. And even though we're projecting no, no increase this year, but a three percent increase for the next four years, and these incremental increases on the commercial businesses, in any, any given year, we can say, oh, you know what? Our finances look pretty good this year. Let's just charge one percent or two percent. Or no, or maybe we don't need to raise, there have been years where we said, we don't need to raise rates at all this year, like this year and last year. We didn't have to raise rates at all. So when we vote for three percent for flat rate and the, and the percentage increases for the commercial businesses, that's just a projection for the next five years. We do take a look at our sanitation district budget every year and decide if we're going to raise, raise the rates or not. So I hope that that's, that's clear. And that is going to, and I'm assuming, because this is a new thing, that that's going to include the commercial business rates also. You can decide, okay, this year, we're just going to leave the commercial business rates the same. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Like you mentioned, so annually, when staff hits the tax rule to assess the charges every year, staff comes to a point of council with another analysis done by our on-call engineer, Dexter Wilson. And as you mentioned, there is no need for increases. Staff will make that recommendation at that point.
Councilmember Deveron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was said in the presentation that the rate increase is necessary to keep up with costs of improvement projects to the sanitation district, which is essentially sewer pipes. And then money from the sanitation is also used to pay city staff. But my question is what projects are being worked on?
And I'll refer to staff for response.
Yes, we have, we currently have three CIP projects in our pipeline, starting with
Per year?
Yeah, per year. Per fiscal year.
So per fiscal year, yes, that's correct. We, our, our process is we undertake a design of a project one year and then we do construction the following year. We are delayed in our prior three years of CIP projects. So that's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so again, what projects are we being, are being worked on?
So there's three projects being worked on. They're in the design phase. So twenty twenty twenty-one, that is the sewer rehab of Bakersfield. So it is a mainline in the Bakersfield channel off of Encinala. That's currently in the design phase. We will, or design phase, actually, I'm sorry. The notice that the design phase has been completed and we'll be putting it out to bid in late summer or late fall. And so I apologize, that's eighteen nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen CIP Bakersfield. Nineteen twenty is the rehabilitation of the Central Avenue pump station. So we are upgrading that pump station to, we're upgrading that pump station essentially. So the pump station services a number of homes on Central Avenue and discharges that wastewater up to Sandy Del and discharges it out, made on federal.
Oh, where on, where on Central is that? Central is a very long street.
My house.
So Central and like Cabisques?
My house.
Yeah, it's, I don't know the cross streets, but it is on Mr. Willis' property.
And then there's one more project?
And the eighteen nineteen
I'm sorry, and the first one in the twenty eighteen, well, we're currently in twenty twenty-three. So it's the year twenty twenty-three and we're talking about a project dating back to twenty eighteen and it's in the design phase, just got completed. Then nineteen twenty, what, where is that at?
So nineteen twenty is
In progress, like where is it? In its progress state?
In the design phase.
Okay, and then there was another project, you said?
Yeah, so eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one. So eighteen nineteen is also, also in design. And this one consists of multiple sewer upgrades throughout the city. It proves, it includes upsizing of pipes, line repairs, lining of pipes, the exact locations, I'll have to follow up with you, there's a number of them.
Okay, so that was, sorry?
Yeah, so eighteen nineteen, so that's eighteen nineteen. That one is, that one completed design. That one will be bid out in July or the fall. So that one has essentially, because of the sensitive areas, that some of the areas is bird nesting season, so we can't construct during bird nesting season. So that's why the project will be bid out at the end of summer or early fall.
Councilmember Deveron, we add, all of those projects are contained in the city's budget in the sanitation CIP, and they're all listed. And there's a table, if you want to write this down on page ninety-one of the budget, there's a table that lists all of the projects that the sanitation district will be or could be funding. Because this is also based on our sanitation master plan, our sewer master plan that we put together some years ago to make sure that we stay up, kept up on all of our pipes so we don't have sinkholes or failures. And so we stay on top of our infrastructure.
Thank you, and I just want to clarify, because that was just one question. What projects are being worked on? The answer to that was a three-part answer on his, thank you. I have another question, and actually just to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying. So see, tonight we're talking about we need to increase rates because we've got so many projects going on. And you just said that we have three projects. And some of those projects are nowhere near getting done. They're, I mean, they're, we're in the year twenty twenty-three and we still haven't completed a project that we set to complete in like two thousand and eighteen. I just want to make that very clear to the public who's listening to know where we're tracking our progress on things. And when we say that we need money because we're working on all of these projects and then it becomes, well, we only have like three projects. That matters. My second question is, what cities in San Diego? Because on page nine of this packet, I'm not sure if the public has given a copy of the slideshow presentation. I don't know if they've given a copy of it on that table. But if you are on page nine of this packet, under rate structure evaluation, it says, as it stands right now, the city collects money from people. Residential, homes, and then from business owners in Lemon Grove. And that's as it stands. And now what city staff is proposing is that on top of collecting from residents, on top of collecting from Lemon Grove business owners, that we also collect from vacant buildings. So that's a new thing, or I may find mistaken, but, so now we're adding a third party to tax and take money from, and that's now vacant properties, which we all know that there are many vacant properties here in Lemon Grove. I'm going to comment on that a little later. The question is, is he, it would be, what cities in San Diego County charge a sewer charge like the one being proposed on vacant properties? What cities do that?
So Councilmember Deveron, you are incorrect. We currently charge sewer charges for all properties in Lemon Grove, regardless of whether they're vacant or not vacant. What we're doing with this new rate structure is because there's no flow, we're bringing that amount down to only cover the, the cost of running the, this agency, not flow costs that they have to put into the sewer system.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So now for vacant properties, so then I didn't understand at all?
I'm so sorry, you've asked more than two questions. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and move on to council members now. And I'll ask everyone to be mindful of the two-question limit. Just know that we do have one more round where you will be able to ask two questions and provide comments. And so council members now.
So the last time that we were here and discussing this issue, there was a lot of concern for our senior citizens in the community and people who may be impacted by, you know, they only have one or two people. They're not using that much water. And that this flat rate as opposed to the commercial rate, which is more a fair, described as a fair and equitable approach because you pay for what you use. But on the other side, we're doing a flat rate. And so in order to provide some equity to seniors and people who don't use that much water, can you describe, I'm very excited that you included the appeal process. And thank you for listening to the concerns of our citizens about that issue. Can you describe to us a little bit more about the appeal process for someone who feels like they're being overcharged when they don't use that much water with this flat rate?
So, yeah, the appeal process, that was, it was clarified. It's been in existence, but it's been clarified to include residential current code. Didn't exclude them. Essentially, in your agenda packet, there is a form Essentially, in your agenda packet, there is a form individual homeowner, if they had a concern or seeking an adjustment, would complete the, is the appeals form, submit that to staff and additionally provide factual data. So they have to provide their water records from ELEX Water District on their flows, or I'm sorry, their consumption data from ELEX Water District. Submit that to staff that will review the the consumption data and see how their, the daily consumption pairs up with what they're requesting. And the district engineer and/or does a need would submit their final determination whether or not an adjustment would be needed.
And then I've heard the concerns of the community regarding how much businesses will be charged and the impact to businesses and also for our Lemon Grove citizens. So I wanted to highlight the fact that this year and last year, there were no rate increases. So councilmember Laverne just said that we were increasing rates, but we're not actually increasing rates. We've taken a hard look at the budget, we don't have to, and so we're not going to. So I think that's really important to note. We're fighting for the citizens to try and keep these rates as low as possible and provide alternative, like if you're not using it, there's different things that you can do to challenge what you've been charged. Just to make sure that it's an extra layer of fairness and equity for our homeowners. So I just wanted to highlight that and confirm that this year, there is no rate increase for residential. And for a lot of the people who are, it sounds like the majority, there's only 94% who are not in that high category. So for local businesses, are they going to see dramatic rate increases? What's your opinion?
Repeat the question.
So we've established there's going to be no rate increases on the current sewer level for rate, sewer rates for residential homes. For the commercial side, for the 96% or 94% who are not in that high category, are they going to see a dramatic jump in our rates? And if so, like what percentage of rate increases might they be expecting?
It's going to vary by individual customer. So, you know, you can't say your commercial high is going to be this, commercial low is going to be this because with this change of structure, well, it doesn't look at every individual customer's data. So they don't have an answer to you on a global thing of, you know, on average, what, you know, what is that going to be? This will be one of the things that is getting looked at in order for getting these rates put in place, you know, tax rules, everyone's customer will be calculated based on the water usage for that submitted to the tax rule. So they will be calculated for every customer. But in terms of doing the rate study where you're looking at the averages, it's not as simple as looking like at the residential class or where the group is a whole. When we do look at the big picture though, of all class cost of service for residential and commercial, there's an implication that commercial in its entirety would actually stay without change. So, you know, it's kind of a zero-sum game. There's a certain amount of money that you totally have to collect. If someone's going to get an increase, someone else needs a decrease, right? And because there's no profits made and/or losses, so everything has to be covered. And when you look at the commercial class as a whole, it's actually showing for the cost of service that they would have decreases. When you're looking at the average as a whole, when you're looking at the individual customers within that, like it's, you know, mentioned in the slide, some are going to go up, some are going to go down. And it really all depends on how their water usage correlates to their current assignment of behaviors.
Thank you so very much, and I'll piggyback off of that. If you take a look at page two of the study, there's actually a chart that outlines what the projected charge was for the past 10 years. And it's in the staff report on page two. And again, it's a 10-year look from FY 2013, 14 to FY 2022, 23. And over time, the projected change range was anywhere from 3.75% to 5.75%. Now, within the last five years, the projected change was 5.75%. And each year, from 2018 to 2022, the actual, the actual change was 3%. And for FY 2022 to 2023, it was 0%. And so what this does is it sets a maximum or a threshold of what could be charged as we move into the future. This will come back on an annual basis and we will receive a recommendation from staff based on the true needs to cover the cost for the system. And so I just wanted to make that very clear because today, we are not saying that for each year, for the next five years, you're going to get charged that rate of 3%. What we are saying is, this will come back. We will get a recommendation and that recommendation could be anywhere from 0%, maybe 1.75%, but when there's a true need, 3%. And so I just wanted to make that clear. And I'll ask staff if you have anything to add to that.
I would just make one comment, and I didn't bring, didn't highlight this in the presentation. It is actually written in on the document, on the presentation, that that is a maximum annual. And so I think, you know, with these things, like they put into your ordinances and things, that would just be clearly stated. Because that certainly was, you know, the intent and how it was going to come along.
Thank you so very much. I will do a second round of questions. I need to provide your comments. And so I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
I have two things. One is I want to thank you for including examples of sewer rates in surrounding areas. We've been compared to the city or to the county of San Diego, that their rates are lower than ours. There's been complaints about why, I complain about why our rates are higher than the county of San Diego. But if you read the paper recently, the county of San Diego, over the next five years, they're projecting, they're running up against the same wall that we are and they're projecting to raise their rates. And they're going to, they're going to be catching up with us over the next five years if they raise the rates, what they're, if they follow their projections. We just, five years ago, we decided to be very prudent and try to stretch that cost out for our citizens by charging a little bit higher over the years so it doesn't hit everybody, it didn't hit everybody at once. And that's why we were able to build up the reserves that we have so that when that bill comes, we can, we can pay it. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, your name was Beatrice from El Pollo Grill?
Yes.
I have personally thanked you-
Yes.
-for your contributions to the St. John's Food Pantry.
Yes.
But I want to publicly at this meeting say thank you very much for all that you've done, particularly through COVID, to help our food pantry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that you give, you will receive.
I certainly hope so, that it comes back to you. So thank you so much. Okay, that's all.
Thank you so very much, and Councilmember Laverne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to go back to the vacant property. I'm going to read what it says here on the slide, which is, it's under the section, rate structure evaluation, proposed hybrid rate structure, it's an overview. Then it delineates residential, commercial, and then vacant property. On both letters, it says vacant property and then it says new rate proposed for vacant parcels connected to the sewer system to recover fixed costs incurred regardless of volume or strength of wastewater discharge. So it's a new rate being proposed for vacant parcels. However, I'll go back to my question, which was, what cities, so what cities in San Diego County charge as what we're proposing here? That a new rate proposed for vacant parcels connected to the sewer system to recover fixed costs incurred regardless of volume or strength of wastewater?
You have to do that research and get back to you. Cities that have that question?
I guess. Do you happen to know, off of your experience of working in other places? Does that sound like other cities, does it ring a bell, other places have been that way?
So Councilmember Laverne, we really, unless we're really specifically asked that question, we can't extrapolate on what other communities are doing because we're not looking at their restructures or, or we get an idea of what they, what they do with flow, but we don't get an idea of the rate structures. And what I want to clarify, as far as new rates, currently, if the vacant building, they're currently getting charged on their property tax, a full EDU. And what this does is it doesn't charge them a full EDU because their property is vacant. They get charged a lower rate because they're not putting any strength or flow into the system. That's, that's the difference. So we're trying to create some equity because we don't need an EDU for a vacant property.
Give you just a point of clarification on the intent of that, to be clear. So there are different, we are not talking about an undeveloped piece of property. You know, you cannot charge an undeveloped piece of property a sewer rate.
Right.
So it is-
Like a property that has a building that's-
Yes.
Abandoned for five years or something?
Yeah, unimproved, undeveloped, not connected to the system. That's, that's the key. And so in terms of industry practice, can't tell you specific individual utilities, but in terms of, you know, looking at the best practices or how you set rates, the vacant parcel concept is if you, if you have a property and you are connected to the system, there is infrastructure that has also been incurred to connect you to that system. There is operating maintenance, there's maintenance costs. There are costs that is incurred by the district to have that infrastructure connected to that property. And so it is an equitable approach to charge that customer something, but not a full, as if you were discharging a monthly amount of volume. So, well, I can't name in California the utilities that do that. It is a structure documented in rate-setting best practice manuals. And that is the intent. It's to recognize that if you are connected, your sewer service is available to you, there is a cost to that. And every customer in terms of cost-based, equitable, you know, where, you know, the whole discussion about, you know, rates must be fair and equitable, that makes a fair and equitable rate. It would not be fair and equitable for a piece of property that was getting a benefit that incurred a cost to the district and didn't have to pay for it.
But that's how we've been doing it since.
No, we don't count vacant parcels. So they've been charged with a residential, an EDU, if they're commercial, based on square footage. So they're paying now, so now it's more equitable because they're not paying on a property that is not in use.
Okay, thank you. And then, actually, Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification. After this round of questions, we're going to, we're going to be able to deliver, correct, each one of us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for me for right now. Councilmembers now?
So I don't have either questions. What I wanted to do is just stress that we're, me in particular, I'm really paying attention to the fees that we're passing on to our businesses and to our citizens. I am aware that the dollar doesn't go as far anymore. Everything costs more money. And we are trying to do this the most fair and equitable way we can. And that's really what I'm like, when I'm making my decisions and when I'm looking at this, that's the thought process, you know? My family pays these too, like we incur these fees as well. And I know how much it's taking out of our budget. And so I want to make sure that we are trying to do this and spread it, spread these costs around in the most equitable way possible. And so, you know, unfortunately, especially sewers are just not that sexy. It's just not one of those improvements that you can even visually see. Like when you get a street done, you're like, maybe that looks pretty. But when you're doing sewer lines or sewer maintenance, it's just not one of those things that like, I want to spend my money there. And so I, I'm really paying attention to this, really paying attention to the information that we've got from our citizens. But I think this approach will get us to the path of the most equal, fair distribution of these costs to the community.
Councilmember, Councilmember Snow, I think sewers are sexy. Especially when you flush the toilet, you want that to work and you want that to go somewhere. So it is super sexy to be in sewers.
And so I just want to make it clear that this is pretty much establishing what the threshold will be. But it will come back for further discussion as to the actual amount that will not exceed 3%. And so I just want to make that very clear. This year, it's 0%. And I believe based, based on the recommendation for FY 2023, 2024, are you recommending 0%? So today, it's 0%. And starting in July 1, it will be 0%. And so the next time, we will make, we will take a deeper dive into what it can be. It would be for for the next fiscal year, which would be 24, 25. But this sets the foundation for our discussion. And I just wanted to make that very, very clear.
And just to add on to that, Madam Mayor, it sets the foundation of a 3% charge for the next five years. And we, it's a maximum charge. So we, again, as we've done in past practice, if we only need a quarter percent, we will only charge. We need that thing like we have in the last two years, we will, we will charge zero. So it's just the ceiling, but we can set it anywhere between 0 and 3%. And that's what we've done each year in the previous five-year study and the previous five-year study from that. Again, you said it on page two of the staff report, shows a 10-year history. And there are very few years in which we charge the maximum we're allowed under Talk 28.
I thank you so very much, and I'll just, before we close the public hearing, I just want to check in with staff to see if there's any additional information that you'd like to share.
100%.
Thank you. And so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second? We have a motion in a second. I will ask our secretary to call a moment.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Laverne?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
That motion carries for the several.
Thank you, and now I will see if council has any final comments. I would, Councilmember Mendoza?
Well, I'd like to move that we, um, conduct the first reading by title only, according to the number two.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, um, I'll check in with Councilmember Laverne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to clarify a couple things. Um, Ms. Snow, I think you, you did understand what I said earlier, you misconstrued what I had said because I never said that rates were being increased for residents. I do however, I am however, of the very firm opinion that rates are going to be increased. And it's not just going to be increased for everybody equitably. Actually, it kind of seems that big businesses like Home Depot are going to benefit from this. They're going to see a decrease and small businesses like Beatrice's at El Pollo Grill are going to feel it. And our small businesses like El Pollo Grill, um, those are the backbone of our city. Those are the businesses that make up our city. And those businesses for a very long time have expressed to this council, um, have expressed to council, maybe not this in particular actually, but have expressed to council that they feel like they are very alone. They, they do not have any sense of team with the city, and, and that's a shame because the city being financially viable rests on having positive relationships with our businesses because our businesses make money, they get money from us, and it's a big circle of life that leads to financial health for our city and financial viability. So, um, yeah, the business owner who got up and spoke today said, we need the city, we need you, you need us to prosper. Like I say, it's a big circle of financial prosperity. And for too long, it seemed like there was a lopsided thing going on to where we're not doing what we need to do to make sure the city's viable. Instead, we just put money to special interests and to where it's beneficial for us personally as politicians to make us happy versus making the larger population happy. Um, the sewer rate, I mean, we're not talking about a decrease. I mean, common sense would tell you, we're not talking about decreasing people's sewer rates. There are many people on business who see an increase. This is kind of controversial as it's a public hearing, people got up and made public comment, this is not something that people are something to joy about currently. And kind of what I, my perspective on this, and it's going to be reflected in my vote, is that the sewer rate changes seems like a way to compensate for failures, to find alternative and more logical ways to make the city financially viable. To do such would require hard work and more effort to meet economic development goals council has tasked staff with fulfilling. Within the last two years, the city manager has admitted at at least one council workshop that the city manager's office has done no work, no work to meet the city council's adopted economic development goal. So on one hand, I see that this rate increases a lazy way out of trying to make up for money for things where we could possibly be making up for the shortage of money if there is one actually, because it seems like we, Councilmember Mendoza said that we have racked up, um, all this money because we've been charging a lot, um, by doing other things and kind of just by working a little bit harder. That's my humble opinion.
And Councilmembers, no?
To the, to the businesses and to the citizens out there, I want you to know, you are not alone. We are in this fight with you. This is like, if anything, politics is very local for each of us that are sitting up here. None of us come from really rich backgrounds. I've worked in nonprofit agencies. We have a very tight budget, and I understand the struggle. I've raised five kids in this community, and anybody who knows who's raised a child, it is not cheap to do so in this community. I am super proud of this community. We have a volunteer ethic in this community that's unparalleled. I don't see the kind of things as far as volunteerism goes in this community like I've seen in other places. And so despite, um, negative rhetoric to the same, I want you to feel our support up here. We have to charge rates, like as a city, we have to charge rates. And so the, there's options on how we distribute the cost among our citizens. And so this, in, uh, for the commercial district, it's as close as we can come to creating a fair and equitable way and mechanism for charging rates and for defining that. And if you feel like it's not fair, if you feel like it's not working for your business, that it's, it's too much of a burden and it's costing you your business, there is an appeal process. We made sure that that was included. There was a version of it before, but now we've made it sure, and not just for the commercial, but also residential. And that's expressly put into this version, um, of, of our, our rate plan and resolution. And so I want to make that really clear. I, I believe in this community. I picked this community over other communities to raise my kids because so much happens down there at the Lemon Grove Little League Field. We have people like Beatrice who has been there and pushed a thriving business. And so we wanted to be there to do this. I have taken a look at this and what I, I like that we are doing a fair and equitable approach for the commercial businesses. It's at least tethering their use of the system to how much they're being charged. I wish that we didn't have to charge rates. I wish that we didn't have to pay for these things because everything's getting so expensive. But we use them, and so we have to pay for them. Otherwise, if we don't kick these things up, if we don't invest in these CIP projects that are super important, then there's failures. And failures cost a lot of money. And so it's better to invest in our CIP projects, make sure that they're adequately funded and take care of this. And just for clarification, you can't use sewer money, like we can't raise extra sewer money and use that for something else to cover something else that we're, that we're not funded. So that, that's not something that's happening here. It's, it's not even possible. It's against the law to be able to do something like that. And so that's not what we're doing here. You're just paying for the sewer that you use. And if it, if it's too much of a burden, let us know, and, and we'll see what we can do, what the city staff can do to help you through that process.
I want to make sure that everyone understands how government works. And I say that because there's language out there that alludes to fraud. This is what I'm hearing. And there's language out there that alludes to politics. But the truth of the matter is, is that this is business. And we are here to take care of the business of the city. I, I almost feel as though it's important, like in this moment, to make sure that we have a legal opinion stated on the record regarding sewer rates. Can sewer rates go into the general fund? Can sewer rate, rates be used for any other use other than sewer-related projects? I think that needs to be very clear to people because there are statements that are made not only here at this platform, um, but by folks here in the audience that, you know, these rates are not necessarily used for sewer-related projects and that this money is being funneled, um, for other uses. And I want to make it very clear that this money is specific for sewer projects and that it cannot be applied for anything else. But I'll refer to the city attorney, um, to weigh in on that.
Well, I think I could say a couple of things about that. First of all, you, you are operating as the board of this sanitation district right now. It's a completely separate entity from the city. And so you have your own budget, um, and you determine how that budget is distributed on an annual basis, just like the city does. Um, the other thing that was stated by staff earlier is that, um, the sewer rates are not for profit, nor are they for loss. They are to cover costs. Um, and so there is nobody walking away with extra money as a result of these rates. They are purely to cover costs, and that is, that's part of the Prop 218 process as well, which is why notices goes out, and it's a very specific process to protect the funds that are collected for the, for the costs of running the system.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, um, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, but also that everybody understands that even in this year that we're in, um, your sewer, your sewer rates were not increased, although, uh, there was a projection, and your sewer rates will not be increased this year as well. There is no increase. I want to make that very clear on the record. I know that we have a motion, and I'm seeking a second on this particular, um, agenda item so that we have a second.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, before, um, we do have a second, I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Sorry, I just wanted to interject that I would recommend that the motion be amended to include a finding of the, um, of the protests that were received. I understand there were four, so could you include that in your motion? Uh, the motion is to accept staff's recommendation regarding the ordinance and the finding that there are four protests that were received.
Okay, yes, so amended. And we have a second? Second is amended. And you, and I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Board member Mendoza?
Aye.
Board member Laverne?
Thank you. As the city attorney just said, these costs are for, these funds are for covering costs. These costs need to be for projects or costs of running the system. Let's clarify, that doesn't include sack time.
Yes or no? Otherwise, I will move on, I'll have the city clerk move on to, uh, councilmembers, no?
I'm going to cast my vote. So this money does go for sack time, and as we just heard, there's only three projects in the work, all of which are not completed.
We'll move on.
I hope we vote on, sure.
She votes no. Uh, councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Sheriff person Vasquez?
Aye.
That motion carries for, to one.
Uh, it would be three to one. Thank you. Next, we have, I remember, three, which is the appeal of the community development manager's decision to deny, to deny minor use permit N P two-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero-four, a request for early separation findings for a regulated use marijuana dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary at six-nine-two-five through six-nine-three-five North Avenue in the general commercial zone, APN four-nine-seven. And let me start all over with that. Number is APN four-seven-nine zero-one-three zero-three-zero-zero. And I'm checking with our city clerk to see if all the notices have been given, is required by law, and if the complete file of exhibit correspondence and other documents have been provided.
All notices have been given, all documents have been placed on the papers.
Thank you. And, uh, at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I will turn it over to our city manager, um, Lydia Lomero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city councilmembers. I just wanted to make you aware that the, um, appellant has requested to continue this public hearing to June twentieth. Staff is recommending that the council make a motion to approve the appellant's request to continue this hearing to June twentieth.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Laverne, second. And we have a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Laverne?
Just to clarify, this is a motion to push this up to the date. It's an aye.
Councilmembers, no?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Uh, thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I want to clarify that with this continuation, we don't have to renotice this meeting, but anybody that had a speaker slip or anybody that submitted comments, we will keep that with the package. And when it comes back to the city council, um, those will also come back to the city council as well.
Thank you so very much. And we are now moving on to the council member meeting and reports, uh, this section of the meeting dedicated to oral, uh, report of the city council about meetings attended at the presence of the city for appointed boards, commissions, and city events. A report should be a brief summary of meetings attended at your capacity as a city official. As a reminder, we want to be careful to keep these comments brief and stay within boundaries of ground. This includes matters that are not on the agenda. Each council member will have two minutes to write the report. And I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
On, on April ten, I attended the California Leader Cities Meeting. Uh, we heard from Rear Admiral Mark Delmer, the president and CEO of the San Diego Military Advisory Council. And he talked about the impact, impact of the defense budget on our regional economy and common issues that we share, um, our community share with the military. It was a very interesting, um, discussion. Uh, that evening, the city council held our pre-budget meeting, which I attended, um, on March thirteenth. I attended the Heartwood Fire, uh, training meeting. We discussed the annual budget and employee contracts, and that includes more reports.
Um, thank you so very much. And I'll turn this over to Councilmember Laverne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to report on one very important meeting that I had, and that was just yesterday. And it actually has to do with safety concerns that residents continue to express, and that has to do with the broken or non-hunching intersection at Palm and Lemon Grove Avenue. There was an accident that happened near that intersection, just, I believe it was two days ago, a day or two ago. Hopefully, um, city manager's able to provide an update today on the dais on that intersection. I know she shared a little bit of information, but council not too long ago saying that work will begin next week at the Lemon Grove Avenue and Palm or San Diego intersection. Due to trenching on the Grove Avenue, there will be traffic delays once construction starts, but granted that there was an accident that just happened a day or two ago. I don't know if you have any other update that you can survive for the public's benefit. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmembers, no?
On April sixth, I attended a major wastewater, um, meeting. I also, that day, attended the city leader summit to help prepare for a trip to Sacramento on issues facing our cities. On April seventh, I attended the San Diego Abiction Protection Collaborative to try and identify ways to keep people in their homes. On April tenth, I attended the Lemon Grove Revenue and Expenditure Workshop. Highly encourage everybody to continue to participate in those events. That's where your voice really, really matters and can come into consideration when we're planning out the budget and our goals for this next year. So I highly encourage everyone to come to those. I also attended that day the League of Cities San Diego Division meeting. On April twelve through April fourteenth, I went up to Sacramento with the League of Cities to help advocate for us. We are fighting for three billion dollars to come back to cities. We don't want, part of, part of what I'm learning is that through the continuum of care, our city is getting zero dollars, um, from the revenue that's coming down, all those to City of San Diego and, and other big cities in our area. None of the East County cities are getting to drop that. And so we're fighting for that money to come directly to our city. So it's an important fight, and, and I went out there and, and lobbied hard. On April seventeenth, I attended a meeting with the Center for Equity Advocacy in San Diego. It's a group that's trying to promote social equity, um, regarding marijuana, its impact in our community. And we specifically talked about a $200,000 grant that could be used for assessment to assess the impact of that in our community here. And, and I, you know, I hear the community, we need to be ever-present on what's going on in our community and make sure that we're actively fighting for all of our brothers, sisters, sisters in this committee and, and in this community, um, regardless of, of race, color, nationality, but we have to, we have to be cognizant and be smart about it and really learn in this assessment by being one of those ways to do that. Um, I also attended that, in the, uh, meeting with the Pacific Southwest Association of Realtors to see what we could do to bring investment into our community. I want to bank this community the first, the place where you buy your first home. And so that's what we discussed, is how to create increased opportunities for home purchase in our community at affordable rates. And then on April fifteenth, I attended, um, the SD thirty-five environment.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And I attended the Edge of Anza. It was a very nice event. I actually saw Councilmember Mendoza there as well. I'm not sure if you, Councilmember Snow or Laverne was there, but, uh, there was an increase in attendance of families and little ones who had. but there was an increase in attendance of families and little ones who had, that had a excellent time at the Edge Advocanza. They were able to take those with their new butt names. They had Acon based on Adrian's games, Ace painting, and lots of family fun. Also attended the pre-budget meeting and those meetings are so very valuable because it's not a one-way conversation. This is your opportunity to engage and ask questions, meaningful questions that have to do about our budget and how important our budget is to ensuring that this city can continue to thrive. And, you know, we will have follow-up meetings as we enter into our budget season. And we encourage each and every one of you to be part of our means regarding the budget. I also was in Sacramento with the League of California Cities as I serve on the board. And our advocacy is for following. That's to protect and expend investments to prevent and reduce homelessness, to increase the supply and affordability of housing while retaining local decision-making, to improve public safety in California communities, and to save our essential local revenues and support physical sustainability. Two things that are very important. Number one, the advocacy of $3 billion to fund and help cities to prevent and reduce homelessness and to boost affordable housing. And then the other thing I'd like to note is, yes, they're looking at 1,700 fields and really focused in on about 1,000 of those fields. But, you know, the work that they're doing is very important. And yes, I see that it is my time. And so I'll turn it over to our city manager, Lydia Lamarr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lamarr, you keep my report. I was going to have Mr. Murquey give the council an update on that signalized intersection.
Great, thank you, Madam City Manager. A quick update on the traffic signal at San Miguel and Grove Avenue. During our last council meeting, the council approved a task order, a purchase order to Southwest Signals for the construction and the repair of that intersection. Since that meeting, we, so Southwest Signals, we will be conducting a reconstruction meeting sometime next week. At that time, they'll deliver a schedule as far as their maintenance milestones for, for that project. Just as a recap for those in, in the audience, you know, we experienced an unfortunate circumstance on that traffic signal where the meter, the SDT meter that powered that traffic intersection was co-located with, co-located onto the cabinet. The cabinet is the computer system that operates that traffic intersection. The cabinet is way, is way old. It's way beyond its, its life. It failed. The electronic components, the computer within that traffic signal failed. We had to replace, replace that cabinet with a new cabinet. But because the design is so old, they no longer, can no longer affix an SDT meter onto that cabinet. So we had to relocate the meter across the street on Palm, Palm Street, kind of near the 7-Eleven. So we were going to install a new SDT, SDT meter to power that traffic intersection. And that will be installed across the street. We then had to trench conduit across Lemon Grove Ave, so along Palm Street and Lemon Grove Ave, and connect to the new cabinet that's being installed. So that's why there's permitting delays with SDT to figure out what the best design possible is to avoid any further delays with being so close to, to an empty track. But in any case, I have to report that that project is moving forward and will be providing, or staff will be providing to city manager. The city manager can just, this, send you guys to send me, thank you, the schedule for that project.
Thank you so very much. And with that said, our next regular city council meeting will be held on May 2 at San. This meeting is now adjourned.